Good morning and welcome to the May 3, 2022 City Council Meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you would, please stand and join me in prayer and reflection. I was gracious having finally come before you today, giving thanks for another day. Well, thank you for us giving us the opportunity to serve the city of Jackson and all those people that live here and come here, work, play. We ask you to give us the wisdom to make decisions that best benefit our city moving forward and today. I ask all these things in your son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
In him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call Sandy. See all council members present with the exception of Councilman Cisco. Item four is approval of the minutes from the April 5, 2022 City Council Meeting. Those minutes were emailed out to you. There is no additions or corrections to the minutes. They will stand approved as read. Item five is proclamations and recognition. We have two of those today. So I'm headed down to the podium. I'll ask the USJ Women's Soccer Team if they would join me at the podium.
All right, let's give them USJ.
All right, we have a proclamation for our state champion, USJ Lady Bruins. Whereas the University School of Jackson Lady Bruins Soccer Team is honored this day for displaying the highest standards of sportsmanship and fair playing and being for being the best high school teams in the state of Tennessee. Whereas the players and coaches of USJ Lady Bruins Soccer Team consistently demonstrated determination and willingness to win, which led them to a team victory again and again against the best teams in the state. Whereas Coach Paul Conway provided superb coaching skills, which enabled the team members to possess the confidence and skills to play the best of their abilities. Whereas the USJ Lady Bruins Soccer Team advanced to the T double S double A Soccer State Championship in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and the team went on to win the 2021 Division 2A State Championship in Chattanooga. And whereas the US Lady, USJ Lady Bruins, say that three times fast, soccer program has earned the distinguished honor of being the first high school program in Madison County to win three soccer state championships. Now therefore, I, Scott Conger, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim May 3, 2022 as Lady Bruins Soccer Day. Congratulations, Lady Coach.
No. I'll just say any thank you. We're very proud to represent the city of Jackson and we appreciate all the hard work you guys put in, but it, this is a great honor. Thank you for taking the time out there. What these girls did was pretty special, so we appreciate it. Thank you. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next up, we have a proclamation for National Women's Health Month. Representatives here? Oh, there we go. Good morning. Whereas National Women's Health Month celebrates extraordinary progress in women's health and recognizes that more needs to be done to safeguard the health of women for generations to come. Whereas National Women's Health Month begins on Mother's Day each year and focuses on reminding women to carve out me time, they need for healthy practice, self-care, and make those yearly doctor's appointments, which are so important not to forget. Whereas National Women's Health Month celebrates the efforts of national and local community organizations such as Step Ahead West Tennessee, its volunteers and other services to improve awareness of key women's health issues, including a safe baby spacing and safe and infective contraceptives. And whereas women's health remains a priority for families, communities, and government, and our commitment to keeping women healthy is stronger than ever. Whereas the Step Ahead West Tennessee is dedicated to women's health every month and will have a women's health luncheon on May 19, 2022, to educate more women about their health to encourage participation. This luncheon is free. Now therefore, I, Scott Conger, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of May is National Women's Health Month.
We appreciate this recognition. We are standing here sort of in place of Margaret Taylor, our executive director of a Step Ahead, who couldn't be here today. And thank you for promoting women's health and helping young women realize their dreams for, for their futures. And we just want to thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six is invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to any item on first reading can be recognized at that time. First reading, item one is consideration of a resolution to adopt a plan of service and ordinance to annex and the proposed zoning of property of an area referred to as McQuimore, submitted by Surveying Services Incorporated, comprising of 66.94 acres more or less, located at Jack Exum Lane. The proposed zoning is RS1 FH, Single Family Residential Special Flood Hazard District.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have in your packet the materials pertinent to this annexation request. It is a requested annexation, as you know. That's the only ones we can really process these days. It's located contiguous to the city limits. The Planning Commission reviewed this and they are recommending the annexation to you. Also, the plan of service that's in your packet, they are recommending that plan of service and also the zoning for the area upon its annexation, which is RS1 FH, Single Family Residential Special Flood Hazard.
All right, any questions from Council?
Stan, I believe we discussed this. This was a requested annex.
Yes.
So move.
Second. All right, we have a motion in second. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion from Council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine zero.
All right, item two is a consideration of a resolution to adopt a plan of service and ordinance to annex and the proposed zoning of property for an area referred to as Ross, submitted by John Ross on behalf of Ross Family Partnership, comprising of 71.6 acres more or less, located at US Highway 412 East. The proposed zoning is I-2 Light Industrial District.
Again, you have the materials pertinent to this re, this annexation. It is contiguous to the existing city limits. It's on the south side of 412 East, also on the east side of 70 East. This is an area devoted to industrial uses now, so that's why we are proposing the I-2 zoning for this area. You have the plan of service in your packet that discusses the services that will be rendered upon its annexation. The Planning Commission did review this and are recommending approval of the annexation, the plan of service, and the zoning for the property upon its annexation of I-2.
The same question on this one, Stan?
Yes.
Requested annexation.
Yeah, every one that you have will be requested annexations because that's about the only method we have.
All right, this is an item on first reading, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, come up and recognize and state your name and your address. Come up here and have a seat.
I am James Tomlinson.
Come up here so we can get you on record.
I'm James Tomlinson. I live at 87 Highway 412 East, which is directly across from this property with, that the, is proposed to be annexed. I have a concern about the annexation regarding the ingress and egress of this property by trucks or major, large vehicles going up and down that highway, as there is no adequate ingress and egress that is not, that provides a clear visibility for trucks to enter and exit the highway, since it is either above the crest of a hill or below the crest of a hill. That's my concern.
All right, any additional questions from Council?
Are there any considerations on ingress and egress to this property?
Well, of course, it is a state highway, so truck traffic is already present in the area. Myland Express is just south of this property, so we already have trucks entering and exiting. As to the driveway, you know, where they're proposing the road to come off of 412, you know, those things will be evaluated when the site plan is submitted for review, and we'll review those things at that time. But, you know, if there is some issues, then we can address those then.
All right, any additional questions from Council? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Is that all right with you? Does that make you feel just a little bit better if Mr. Pilot, they, they will look at it and address that?
Not really, because the traffic, I've seen two accidents in front of my house already because it's at the crest of the hill and large vehicles, large truck traffic going in and out. There is no other entrance in, on the south side of Highway 412 along that property to have any kind of experience from. It's just my concern for citizens of the county that are traveling back and down that highway and others, that there, it's potential for an accident unless there's a light or some other means put in to slow the, to allow them to enter and exit the property.
I will say again, this is the annexation request, so the things that Mr. Thomas is speaking of are, are related to the site. It is a state route, so TDOT will also be involved in reviewing the driveway cuts. They have to approve those on the state highways. So, so all, you know, TDOT will be involved, we'll be involved. But those are issues that will be addressed later during the site plan review, which is not a part of this, this annexation request.
So we can expect possibly the state to, to put up some type of warning signs or warning lights that there could be traffic entering or exiting from that area?
The state does review these cuts and has to issue the permits, and, and I work with the, the individual that does that, and, and they are very diligent about, you know, looking at those things and reviewing them. And TDOT doesn't want to create any other, any, any safety hazards than already present, and neither do we, so we will evaluate that when it comes through.
If he has concern about this as they move forward with the site plan, what are the, what are the opportunities he has to voice those concerns?
He can speak with Jason Moody with the TDOT Region 4 office, and all you have to do is call that office and they, they can get you in touch with him.
I know Jason.
Okay.
Have you had a chance to talk with Mr. Moody, sir?
I have not.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
And this would also, would the site plan go through Planning Commission or no?
No.
Okay.
No, it would just be reviewed for permitting.
Okay.
But, but Jason will be involved in looking at the request for a driveway cut.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions, comments from Council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine zero.
Thank you. Item three is the proposed budget amendment, land sale, $8,748,688.16.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The city closed on the sale of the industrial land property in April, and this budget amendment would recognize the revenue and it would go to the capital outlay fund at this point, proceed from the sale of that land, so.
Any questions from Council?
Move the approval.
Second.
We have a motion in second. This is an item on first reading, so we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from Council?
In the interest of full disclosure, my father has property in the area.
And Councilman, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment for the solid waste fund for roof replacement of the amount of $140,000.
This proposed budget amendment would appropriate funds to replace the roof on the city property, the city building on Canalco Drive where our health and sanitation department is located. My understanding, the roof is beyond any more repair work and has to be replaced. And the funding for this would come from the solid waste fund, fund balance.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine zero.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Item five is a consideration of an ordinance to replace sections 1-410 and 1-411 of the Code of Ethics, which were adopted in October 2006 under ordinance number 2006038 and codified under Title I, Chapter 4 of the Code of Ethics Ordinance of the City of Jackson. I'll call Louis Cobb up to give us a rundown.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Many of you were at the agenda review where this was discussed as a, an amendment to the ethics policy that was adopted a couple of years ago, I believe, was it? We've had some anonymous complaints come through the portal, five in number. I've given copies of that to each of you and to the media that have requested it. After we received those five, there was some concern in my office, in the mayor's office, and I think with almost every council person I've talked to, that the anonymity was creating more problems than it was solving. So we were asked to check and see what other entities did. We reviewed the Madison County ethics. We reviewed the school system's ethics. We looked at several municipalities. The one that we looked at and liked the best, thought it fit best, was the one from Memphis with some modifications. What it does is instead of having an anonymous complaint jump right into council, having to vote on it, we had some steps to examine it and, and sort through them. And I compared it at the agenda review to the criminal process, where you have somebody complained, something happened, you have swear out a warrant, you have somebody who has to check it for probable cause, you have a preliminary hearing where a judge checks for probable cause, you go to the grand jury where a citizen's group checks for probable cause, and then and only then are you put to trial. We're not quite that detailed, but what, what we wanted to do was to have a ethics committee that would do the initial sorting and decide, does this one deserve investigation, or can we solve it here? An investigation could be as simple as something where someone is accused of committing a crime, and they say, well, pardon me, it's somebody with the same name, right? Silly things like that, but there, so there's two levels of investigation that I see, particularly looking at these. Is what was said true? Is that the whole truth, and then if it's true, is it an ethical obligation? And that's what I hope this change will lead to. Now, we have to pass the amendment to that ethics policy by two readings. We now have five complaints that have been filed under the old policy, so a lot of the discussion Thursday night was, what do we do with these five? What we do with these five is up to the council. Here's my suggestion. If we were in court and they changed the rules of discovery or procedure, or the number of jurors that would sit in to hear the trial, things like that, the court, as soon as those procedures were changed, would take all cases, not just the new ones, but the ones that were in, in the pipeline, so to speak, and process them by the changes, with the idea being the changes were hopefully improvements, and if we have an improved process, we'll get an improved result. Also, the way it was worded, in my opinion, with respect to council, made it difficult for me or impossible to process them, as the city attorney would require going to outside counsel. And so you could have an innocuous, meritless complaint requiring expenditures of thousands of dollars just to say, he has nothing here. So the new process will avoid having that expense, will facilitate having an early examination of the facts, and then it might need to have referral to council, either me or outside counsel. If this is the truth, then what is the effect? So that's my recommendation, that we adopt today this amendment, that we adopt at the next time available, and it may require a special meeting, and I don't know the timetable, a second time, and then we take all five that have been filed and all others that will be filed, and process them through what I hope is the new and improved, more efficient process. That's my, that's my proposal. That's my recommendation. It's your decision. So y'all have any questions?
Any question from the council?
Your question, Mr. Cobb, given that the ordinance has not been voted on, so we've got the original one that we already voted on, and then the new ones, would we, to keep, since we set precedent, to keep it lined up, would we not need to vote on each one individually with the original three options, and then come back and say all of them could go to that process? I mean, can we actually do that since we voted on one and this isn't in place yet?
There's been a release that the Supreme Court is considering changing the law about abortions. Every state has passed, or many states have passed laws that will be reviewed by the law once they've announced if they change it, that change, not under the state of the Supreme Court opinion at the time the law was written. Does that make sense? So you've got laws that are in the process of going up. Until they reach that highest and final level, they'll be, they won't be evaluated until they get to the current evaluation process. That's what I think we have here. We have five complaints that each, in my judgment, now, it's your judgment, not mine, but my, my observation is, we will have five cases that will be done under the old system that based on my conversations, everybody here thinks needs improvement. I think if we're going to improve it quickly, we ought to process them with the improved version.
Yeah.
But you could do, you could vote to do either one.
I think my only concern is in that, is that, and again, I think, as you mentioned, af, there's been concern after. I think even myself and some of us voiced concern in the beginning, and so it's hard. I think we're on the right track. I wish we had done it earlier, but since we didn't, in fairness for, and I hope I would say this if I had a complaint against myself, but it, I'm trying to reconcile the process of handling of them, because we've already done it differently, right, from, from the beginning. And I don't want to make it any more painful for anybody, but just in terms of consistency and the precedent we've set, that's my only concern. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but.
And I'm going to put the ball back in your court.
Sure.
You can do anything, you can get five people to vote on.
Sure.
Okay, I've made a recommendation. That is just a recommendation. That's not a motion, because I don't have the power to make a motion. I understand, I think what you're saying, I hope you understand what I'm saying, and then the council will decide what they think is the best decision.
I think, Councilman, we can, so we're, we're focused right now just on the adoption of the ordinance. What you're talking about, I think we talked about in new business, on how we handle those, the new complaints. And so we focus, if we can do this first and then get to new business, then we can talk about that, I think.
Okay.
I have a question, if I may, Louis. One difference in the new ordinance and, and what we were dealing with previously is that these complaints now will not be anonymous. Is that correct?
Moving forward.
Yeah, according to the, according to the amended ordinance that you passed.
Right, they'll not be anonymous.
Okay.
But until we get to that point where we've had two readings, and this is potentially approved, is where we're at.
Well.
And that's what you were speaking to a minute ago.
You're right.
Right.
The, the portal is still open.
Yeah.
You know, or the wormhole, if I might go.
Exactly. Could you speak to, and I know that this was one comment that I'd had about the potential use of this for political issues, and could you speak to, to, I guess it's under 1-410, number nine?
Is that the?
That's about that, the kind of.
We talked about.
Stand down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I noticed when France was having elections, that nobody could do any political advertising the, the 24 hours before election. You know, I think we all might go along with that. But what this says is during the political season, we're not going to take ethics complaints because of the highly charged political nature and the potential for abuse. We thought that made sense. That doesn't mean you can't report to the controller, or to the local sheriff, or to the police department, or bring it up in council. But there's still plenty of avenues, but this one would be closed during the election season.
So that would be from the point that someone submits their qualifying petition?
I think it's the deadline for the qualifying petition.
Deadline for qualifying.
Deadline for qualifying petition, I think, to, until election.
Till election, yeah. The, the only, I guess, one, one comment that I had under 1-411, in line, well, I guess in section one there, the word retribution, I think, has some vengeance in it, and I, I wonder if a better word is maybe regress. I'm, I would offer that as an amendment to this, rather than the word retribution. I think that kind of carries some.
I'm certainly not going to argue with you with what you think, and I'm not going to say that.
And I don't know how we're trying to be vengeful, but more so get, get to somewhere that's, return things to the way they should be.
I'm, you know, I'm open to whatever y'all think.
What section is that again?
Yeah, that's 1-4, under violations, section one.
Can I at this point blame Teresa Lynn for that? I, I think they mean pretty close to the same thing. I think that probably was the language in the Memphis ordinance that, that we tried to go with the system that's been in place for a while. But sure, you can amend that today or next hearing or next year, whatever. I don't have my thesaurus to look them up.
I, I, I did that as we came in this morning, and I, I know that that, that particular word deals with vengeance, and I don't know if that's the appropriate word for it.
Well, I, I think that if it's vengeful, it's, we should be looking for improvement solutions.
Right.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh-huh.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this ordinance as written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. This is an item on first reading. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'd move to amend the ordinance to, to the language I just spoke of under section 1, 411, one, to change retribution to regress.
All right, there's a motion. Say that one more, say that motion one more time, Councilman.
Under section 1-411, li, I guess line one, well, section one, should read, "In the case of an elected or appointed official, the Ethics Committee may make recommendations to the City Council for action to end or seek regress for any activity that, in the Ethics Committee's judgment constitutes a violation of this Code of Ethics."
I'm not going to repeat that motion. Y'all heard the motion.
Mayor, I, I would renew my motion to include Councilman Taylor's language.
Okay, that makes it easier.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, rephrased to include the language that Councilman Taylor, that I'm not going to repeat because that's a long language. Any further discussion?
One, one more item. Will this, will, will this committee be tasked with looking at our Code of Ethics? Or will they just use the Code of, will they be able to supply the council with recommendations on modifications to the Code of Ethics?
I think anybody can make suggestions to council, both in meetings and other places.
Because they're going to have to deal with all of this.
It certainly would be appropriate for the Ethics Committee to have an informal discussion, or I think committees have, generally have the inherent power to make recommendations to the body of which they.
Yeah, definitely. If they're going through the process and they see an issue, then I would hope that they would make recommendations on improving the process.
Okay. I just know that as they are the ones that will be dealing with this, I want to make sure that they have an avenue to express any changes that may need to come out of this.
But to change an ordinance, they would have to come back through us.
They'd make a recommendation.
Recommendation to us, and we change the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
They'd make a recommendation.
Recommendation to us, and we change the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
All right. It's second reading. Item one on the second reading is consideration of the ordinance to close alley between West Main Street, West Alley, West Lafayette, and North Shannon.
So moved.
And a motion in the second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, eight to zero, one abstain.
Item two is proposed budget amendment for Jackson Fire Department insurance recovery in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
Item three is proposed budget amendment for professional services for Great Wolf Lodge in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
In the interest of full disclosure, my family has property in the area.
Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment for recreation and parks salaries in the amount of sixty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
Item five is proposed budget amendment for engineering in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
Item six is proposed budget amendment for engineering in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
All right, we've on to new business. Item one under new business is a presentation of the bicycle pedestrian and greenways master plan.
I want to say to start that we want to thank the Tennessee Department of Transportation for funding this study. It was a part of their transportation planning grant to us to do this study. Also, I want to say that we were well pleased in the, the amount of attention and involvement from the public. I tell people that one time bicycle pedestrian and greenways were considered just a, an added amenity, but now they are fundamental components of quality of life. So, so they're not just something that people think it's nice to see, but it's something that people expect to see. And so, so we look forward to, to going forward, building this network out. I want to thank the mayor for proposing the million dollars in the budget to fund these improvements as we go forward, because again, you know, a plan is only as good as an implementation. So, so we want to see these improvements go forward, and people to see that this network is getting built out. And our ultimate goal is to have a, a trail that will take us from the Middle Fork Recreation Area all the way down to Bemis. So, and that'll be a combination of bicycle, pedestrian, and greenways, but that's our ultimate goal.
Stan, some would say, take us from Bemis to Middle Fork, so...
That's right. It just depends on your direction, or what's important to you. But, but we look forward to beginning this path and this journey. So I have our consultant here today, and she's going to introduce herself and, and tell you a little bit about the plan.
All right, thank you so much, Stan. My name is Liesl, and I'm here to talk about the plan, some of the planning process that we did, and some of the outcomes. So thank you for having us. You all should have received a handout packet that looks something like this. It includes a plan overview quick sheet, as well as the network recommended, or the recommended networks, so that you can see them easily. And essentially what this plan is, is it's a blueprint for implementing the community's vision for walking and bicycling, based on the analysis that we completed, as well as the public and stakeholder engagement that we received. So that input directly went into the development of the long-term vision that you see there, as well as the four supporting goals to achieve that vision in the long term. So essentially, what is in this plan centers around three various components. The first being an updated and expanded sidewalk, bikeway, and greenway network, or networks. The second component are design guidelines for the facility types that are being recommended, as well as planning level cost estimates on a linear foot basis. The third and final component deals with near-term priorities, next steps, and non-infrastructure recommendations, such as policies or programs. So like Stan said, he's been an important part of this process, the planning department, both Stan and Ms. Hannah. We also had engagement with the Parks Department, as well as the Public Works, throughout this planning process. As Stan also mentioned, this was funded through a T-DOT grant, so the OCT. Basically, the regional community planners have been engaged throughout as well. Again, my name is Liesl, and I'm with KCI. We're a traffic engineering and transportation planning firm out of Nashville. Also have with me today Hannah, who was also worked on this plan, and John and Rachel are back at the office, were some of the other folks that participated in this plan. So today, again, I'm just going to kind of get high-level, go over how the process went down. But I really want to focus on the recommendations, specifically on the next, next steps, being centered around tactical urbanism. I think that's where a lot of momentum can be gained and a lot of excitement generated around walking and biking improvements. So I'm going to show you some examples of what those projects may be. So this project kicked off back last summer in June. We began with an inventory of the sidewalks and bikeways out there. There are about 200 miles of existing sidewalks, 8.5 miles of bike facilities, and then about 6.8 miles, including the trails in the parks of greenways. We also started with, by looking at you all's planning documents that are already on the books, so the one Jackson Civic Master Plan from 2015, as well as taking the recommended networks from the 2045 LRTP. As you all know, you are in that process of updating that plan today. So we've been coordinating with that consulting firm and that planning process as well. And the benefit of having a bike-specific, bike-ped-specific plan is just able to kind of dig down into the more nitty-gritty details and have a little more focused engagement around these improvements. So in terms of existing condition analyses, we looked at a crash history, level of traffic stress. We also looked at access to important community destinations and those census block groups that have a higher number of traditionally underserved populations. We also had two rounds of engagement that really focused on, the first was being gathering issues and challenges, and opportunities as well, for expanding the network in walking and biking in general in Jackson. The second round of engagement focused on refining kind of the draft networks and recommendations that we were proposing. We had a project website up throughout this engagement process, had over 3,000 hits on that website. We had two rounds of surveys. You can see the map there with all the dots on it. That was one of the engagement opportunities in terms of gathering those issues and opportunities. We also had two open house meetings. I know our last, last meeting that we had, some of you all were able to drop in and, and visit with us before your, your budget hearing, so glad you all were able to stop in. But we had great turnout. Over 75 folks signed, actually signed the sign-in sheet, so it's safe to say there's probably some more folks that came in and trickled in through those engagement opportunities as well. Okay, so the recommendations really center around three different components. The first being the long-term vision networks. These are really your pie in the sky ideal, what you're aiming for in the long term. The second component is the priority network. That's where you're going to focus more of your near-term implementation on, on those types of projects in the near term. And then the third component, which Stan mentioned, which I know I really love this idea, is having the, the north-to-south greenway, basically a low-stress connection that connects a number of the geographic areas in Jackson, neighborhoods, destinations, to provide a low-stress connection for, for people of all ages and abilities. You'll also notice on your network maps, little gray circles, and those are essentially five different walkable centers that we've identified. That's where folks are already walking and biking, or the, the form of the built environment supports walkability and bikability. So those certainly help to drive some of the recommendations in terms of focusing improvements in that area, but as well as connecting those walkable centers. These are the long-term vision networks, and again, this is kind of your pie in the sky, very long-term, what the full build-out may look like. The real takeaway from these maps is that some of these connections are development-driven, so as subdivisions develop, they may not look exactly as the alignment is identified. As opportunities arise, you may elect to implement a certain bikeway on a different roadway than what we have shown, but this is basically showing at a high level the types of connections you want to see. The priority network, again, that is where the near-term implementation we're recommending to be focused on. It's a combination, the red lines are bikeways as well as greenways, and then the priority network for the sidewalks, you really want to focus in, again, on those walkable centers. We did score various segments of these projects based on the eight elements that you can see there, and that's basically to have a prioritized list, not necessarily that, you know, one project should be implemented first. It just kind of gives you an idea as opportunities arise to make walking and biking connections. How did those connections score against those various elements? And here's the north-south greenway, that third component. Really tried to hit as many opportunities in terms of destinations, again, connecting those walkable centers, utilizing existing trails that you already have, including the Downtown Fitness Trail, the Arboretum over by Union University. We heard that's a, a place that people like to walk and bike. And again, some of the, the connections may look a little bit different once implementation comes down to it, in terms you may have one neighborhood that prefers the, the loop go through their, their property, or not go through their property. There's also the big asterisks is getting across one of the big barriers, which is I-40. We've identified a potential opportunity to connect the MCO Road, former right-of-way before the interstate was built. We do know that obviously the van-drive extension at some point may happen, so that's an important design consideration, but something that you would have to, pretty large investment that you would want to go after a grant. But the idea there is really to get you off those main, heavy-traffic, higher-speed corridors for a safe and, and low-stress connection. The image there up on the right, I just wanted to mention that some of, some of the connection utilizes lower-stress, low-volume, low-speed streets, kind of known as neighborhood greenways. The example you see up there is from Seattle, and you can have special signage for those streets. You may not be able to see it there in the photo, but there's an asphalt speed hump, just to make sure that the road is kind of self, self-enforcing in terms of speed limits. And then the photo there on the bottom is from Bowling Green, Kentucky. It was something we've, we worked with them on. They had a great stamp that they used to kind of brand their greenway, and they use that along a, that's a, a greenway connection there, but they also utilize neighborhood greenways there in Bowling Green. And so they would utilize that symbol as a pavement marking, as kind of a wayfinding to help folks navigate that connection. Okay, so some of the next steps, again, I'm just kind of glazing over some of the highlights here. These are some of the non-infrastructure recommendations. And that is to really use the tool of requiring new developments, putting strong consideration into them, adding new sidewalk facilities, and at the very least, setting aside rail, right-of-way, that is, for potential future trail connections. It's something that could be used to really expand your network in, in these new communities as they develop. We also heard about the interest in a traffic calming program, shared streets. Obviously, you can't put sidewalks absolutely everywhere, so traffic calming can be an important tool for improving the safety and comfort of those shared street environments. Road diets, that is something that is also, can be a valuable tool for expanding your network. Sometimes roads are built over capacity, or maybe the development style changes and the needs of the roadways have changed. So you can utilize existing pavement, excess pavement space to incorporate facilities. I have an example here showing, this roadway did not have excess capacity, but it was a, a desire of Knoxville. It's adjacent to the University of Tennessee's campus there. And you can see how they narrowed the lanes, and they have one travel lane in each direction to really expand those sidewalk facilities and provide a, a much safer corridor, not only for pedestrians and bikes like this, but it improves vehicular safety as well. So I just wanted to show that example. And then finally, building off of the tactical urbanism program that was recently rolled out last fall. I know we were really excited to see that effort, and that's what I was going to focus on a little bit more today and dig into. So essentially what this is, again, Jackson came up with this great resource document and planning, or process for neighborhoods and other residents and neighborhood groups to pursue these types of projects. So there's, there's definitely a continuum for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So you can have demonstration projects that last about a day to a month, pilot projects, a little bit longer, a month to a year, interim design, one to five years, and that's kind of the range of what's considered a tactical urbanism project. And basically what that does, it just allows you to kind of test out a facility type, see how it interacts with the traffic, you know, does it impact vehicle speeds? Are you accommodating folks as it should be, before you put in that ultimate, permanent, desired facility type? So I wanted to show you some examples. We heard from the community that, or some of the feedback was that folks don't really, aren't really sure what some of the ideas are that, of projects that could be done. I wanted to show you this example. This is from Nashville. This was actually done through their traffic calming program. It's a connection to a school, a little bit under one mile. And essentially what they did is a sort of a road diet, where they rearranged the, the pavement space. And now they have a, a walking and biking connection that includes little plastic, or no, they're actually rubber, rubberized barriers to provide that safe walking, biking connection in a neighborhood that's not going to get a sidewalk for quite a long time, at least as it is on the book. So this is just an example of, of a walking and biking path. These are some other examples of walking and biking paths. The one on the left, I believe, is from Kansas City. It's more of kind of a demonstration project your one day to one week, again, just to see how that may function along a roadway. The one on the right is from Seattle, and it was constructed at a tenth, I want to say, of the budget of the ultimate sidewalk they wanted to connect. But given the activity that's currently there, they were able to utilize some barriers and pavement markings to provide that, that space for pedestrians. Bowl bouts and curb extensions, that's another potential project for tactical urbanism. It's a great way to get your community involved in terms of murals. This is an example out of Nashville, adjacent to an elementary school. They were able to get the kids involved and, and create this great mural that basically provides additional buffer for the pedestrians walking on the sidewalk, but it also provided some traffic calming in a, in an area where they're experiencing speeding issues. These are some more examples. These are out of Memphis, just to show you a different kind of range of, of the different uses for these bowl bouts, particularly as it relates to shortening the crossing distances for pedestrians. Both of these examples show improvements along next to bike lanes, and they also show different material types. The one on the right, the red, is paint, while the one in the upper left is kind of more of a permanent, well, not permanent, but it's a cork material almost, to kind of create those improvements. And I would say that Memphis is, is really leading the way in these creative solutions, and is something to, to look at and kind of see how they're, how they're utilizing all of their extra space and kind of create, again, creating these creative improvements to improve walking and biking. This is a demonstration project that was done also in Nashville. It was through a neighborhood organization and the Civic Design Center there in Nashville, and they created this pop-up traffic circle, if you will, through the community. Again, you can see the neighbors there participating, getting some skin in the game, if you will. And N-DOT, the Department of Transportation, was able to observe the impacts of this traffic circle, how drivers reacted. It did slow vehicle speeds and was ultimately constructed as part of their traffic calming program there. I will say that Public Works in Nashville was a little hesitant about getting into the traffic calming. So this was one of their first kind of test scenarios to see if it was something that they were comfortable with implementing. All right, and finally, pop-up events is certainly also considered tactical urbanism. The top left is an example of Open Street Festival. That's in Memphis, and it basically just reallocates the roadway, shuts it down to vehicle traffic, and, and really has folks out there thinking how to reimagine our public spaces. As, as you all know, our roadways are one of the greatest amount of land that the city has, and so it can be used in lots of different uses. And the bottom-left one is out of Knoxville. That's called Parking Day. And I know Nashville and other communities do that as well. And it's essentially, again, just repurposing your roadway space and creating these little parklets for a weekend, and just letting folks enjoy streets in a different way. The one on the right is something that a planning department or other advocates could do as part of, as you're planning roadway improvements. This one's from New York, but they use little magnet, little magnets, and basically lets people move those around and kind of think about, again, how we use our roadway space and how to safely accommodate walkers, walkers and bikers. So the next steps, immediate next steps, that is, is really to pursue... So the next steps, immediate next steps, that is, is really to pursue that tactical urbanism initiative, really push it out, market it. I know a lot of the residents we spoke to hadn't heard of it, but they were very excited about it. They were really looking to kind of, again, get their skin in the game, kind of bridge the gap between, you know, the city and the residents, and that was something that they were really encouraged to see. And it's also something that can be, you can build momentum and, again, use it to your benefit to test out different types of applications. Pursue grants, that's another important component. Having this plan shows TDOT specifically that, you know, Jackson's thought about this. These improvements have been vetted by the public, so it's certainly a tool that can help you move forward with achieving and securing those grants. And then finally, to use this tool, or this plan as a tool during the development and redevelopment of parcels across Jackson to, again, point to those desired connections that have been identified as you move along. And that is it. We really appreciate it. We had a great time and appreciate it, Stan.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you for being here and doing this, and I think most of us would agree, this is long overdue for our community, and so we're really excited about it. And Mayor, now we've started to take some next steps, and you've been pointing to next steps. So I was curious, in your experience with communities that, from here, have success in implementing it versus communities that don't have success, is there any advice or recommendations for us?
So that's really why we hit on the tactical urbanism, is really generating momentum and excitement with the residents, because you need champions, whether they're elected officials or residents in those neighborhood groups. Getting those businesses on board to potentially adopt, you know, segments of that north-south greenway to construct. So that's why we focused on that, is because I think this planning process occurred at just the right time. Y'all just rolled out that program, so just putting more highlight on that so that you can have planned champions to make sure to push it forward, because this is really a long-term plan. It's the first step in the process, and you've got to be in it for the long game, so.
Mr. Chairman, stand question for you. So with these types of projects, what is a feasible timeline for when we could expect to see some of these things, and either one of you for that matter, but here locally?
Well, of course, you know, some of these projects are, like the tactical urbanism projects, can be done fairly quickly and pretty low cost. The, it's sort of like the more complex the project is, the longer it will take. I think the best thing that it does is it helps shape our decision-making on where to put our public infrastructure monies, because in the past, we've kind of, it's been a shotgun approach. It's been, you know, we've been here, there, and everywhere, but those little pieces get lost in the game because you don't have connectivity. They're just, you're just concentrating on the quick fix or something like that. And so we see it as helping us shake decision-making as we look at improvements. You know, if we're out there, as Tom and I have discussed, if you're out there resurfacing, is it time to look at a road diet? You know, is it time to...
And not waiting till they're resurfacing to ask about the road diet like I did.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we're looking at roads to resurface, that's the time to see if there's any other things that we can do while they're out there, you know, instead of waiting till we've already done something and then going back and having to change it. You know, so one of the things that we've talked about, one example, would be Pleasant Plains Extended. A lot of capacity. We're not sure that all that capacity is necessary, but we don't want to just permanently put something in place and then have traffic breakdown. So we've talked about putting cones up and restricting it to two lanes and providing an extra area for biking and pedestrian. And eventually, a permanent solution would be a dedicated crosswalk to tie the Union Campus into the area where that trails are. But first, we want to see, can we, can that area function with less capacity? So those are the things that we're looking at, and the implementation schedule is what I stress, because it's the most important part of a plan, is that, okay, what are you going to do first? What are the things you need to look at? You know, how do these fit within the network? And I hope as we're budgeting for improvements that come before you, we use it as a guide to help us in our decision-making. Is this something we want to do here, or do we want to put our dollars in a more collective approach that has several things going on where we can get more bang for our bucks? So that's kind of the way we're going to look at these things.
Thank you.
Could you all speak to the multimodal considerations that we're, I know that we've had some discussions with the Transit Authority about some bike racks and some other things, and I think that's a part of an even bigger picture. If you have pedestrian and biking access, but also the linkage between that and our transit system, I think can really kind of be a multiplier for what we can do.
I will say that, you know, when it comes to transportation, you know, cars, of course, make up the majority of your modes of transportation. And bikes and pedestrian ways, while there are modes of transportation, they make up a smaller proportion. They are important because there's always been this age-old argument, you know, we don't have people biking all over the place. Well, is it because the people don't bike, or is it because they don't have safe facilities to bike? So I think it's more of the, you know, the statement at the end. It's, you know, I see these brave people getting out there and sharing the road with some people on Highland and other places, and it's, you have to really want to bike if you want to bike in some of the areas that we have people biking. But I think as we go forward, I think if we provide facilities, then people will use the facilities. So I don't think we can always look at, okay, well, they don't make up a large proportion, so let's don't spend any money on it. I think we look at it in that people are demanding this. As we put these things online, I think we'll see more usage, and so that's how we're going to look at the modes. We're going to look at bike and pedestrian as a mode of transportation, but also as recreation, too. So at first, you know, it serves two purposes, not just one.
All right, any additional questions, comments?
So we have budgeted, or well, we have budgeted but not yet funded for next year.
We have proposed.
Proposed budgets, thank you.
Proposed budget.
For implementation, I think we're all in agreement that we need to figure out how we move forward on, we have these plans developed, how do we execute them?
And I will say, from a development standpoint, it helps us because, you know, we're constantly in a debate with developers about sidewalks, because, you know, developers don't want to put sidewalks in during construction because they get tore up. But they have to put them in at some place, but sometimes there's a debate of, well, is one little piece of sidewalk here that important? I think going forward, instead of having sidewalk bonds that we hold and the sidewalk just, you know, we don't put any in place until it makes sense, we start evaluating them as part of the network. And, you know, in some cases, sidewalk may not be justified, you know, like, for instance, Nolan Park out north, where there's sidewalks proposed for that, not built yet, but it's a cul-de-sac, and it really doesn't go anywhere. It might serve the uses in that cul-de-sac, but that's really not adding to the network. Maybe there's other ways that we could use that more effectively. You know, some places, as they do with trees, kind of have a mitigation fund where if they're not important here, but they're important, maybe that you use those fundings to put those sidewalks in place where there aren't, make more sense.
Like a sidewalk bank.
Yes, and some cities have used that, you know, some effectiveness. But again, those are things that we need to evaluate, and as we go forward. I'd rather see somebody build an effective, run a sidewalk than to build a sidewalk that goes to nowhere and really doesn't add to our network.
As far as tactical urbanism for this year, we're budgeting for that next year, too. And I guess the participation of that, what have you seen that like so far?
Well, I think it's just, you know, we've instituted the program, but we really haven't marketed it in a way that people are real familiar with it yet. I think the recommendations that come in the plan make sense. I think now it's just a point of going out to neighborhood groups, you know, putting some public service stuff out there, you know, promoting it where we can at festivals and different things, because we found that people are really excited about it, but they just needed some guidance. Because when you say tactical urbanism, they say, okay, what is that? What can I do? Well, I think the plan shows you some examples of what you can do, and we also can reach out and pull some resources to help them in doing that.
So we need some local projects to get the ball rolling.
That's right.
Yeah.
The idea of that is the local neighborhoods provide the extreme first pilot where it's, where there'd be planners or whatever, and then we work a plan to fund it long-term if it works.
And we did include as part of the plan in our design guidelines, some examples based on best design guidance for those types of applications. So that's also included in the plan to help you get started.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to accept this?
No, it's just a presentation. We've already motioned to have the study done, so it's just a presentation piece.
Any additional questions or comments from council?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, item two is a consideration of a contract with Arrow Paving Incorporated for cold mix.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Bids were received for cold mix services. This product is used by our street department for street maintenance and repairs. This bid was sent out to 11 vendors. Arrow paving was the best and the only bid received. The cost breakdown will be 112 per ton per delivery and 95 per ton for pickup.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, line zero.
All right, item four is consideration of a bid submitted by Trillium Solutions Incorporated Portland, Oregon for implementation of Google Maps for Jackson Transit Authority. Nope, I'm sorry, I skipped. Consideration of bid submitted by Entrado, I marked that off early, Interactive Services Corporation, Joplin, Missouri for Transit Authority website. There we go.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
As part of our FY22 capital plan, JTA is in the mission of providing our company with a well-designed website that will cater the need of the public as well as staying in compliance with ADA and the federal regulations. JTA went out and received three bids, and JTA would like to use the website of Entrado, which is located in Joplin, Missouri. Jackson Transit is requesting funding for this website, which is a total of $28,265, I'm sorry, $265, and this would be a four-year contract plan.
Any questions from council?
Move the approval.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Chairman, this is the company we're already working with.
Is the company that's already contracted with the city. Very soon. Yeah. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Passed eight to one.
All right. I force consideration of a bid submitted by Trillium Solution Incorporated Portland, Oregon for implementation of Google Maps.
We also, JTA, has liked passengers to be able to track in real-time bus information to get from one destination to the other for the citizens of Jackson to be able to ride public transportation. This particular system, Google Maps, for a five-year plan would come to the total of $24,800. This is also within the FY22 capital plan.
All right, any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed.
All right, item five. All right, thank you. Item five is a consideration of committees and board appointments. We have Recreation and Parks Board, the appointment of Mark Winston to replace Sam Joyner, and appointment of Allison Feith to fill the unexpired term of David Sykes.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed.
All right, we have Jackson Transit Authority Board, the reappointment of Estelle Davis.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed.
We have the Equalization Board, the appointment of Mike Roland to replace Peggy Graves.
So moved.
And motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed.
All right, and get to item six, consideration of compensation for mayor's salary to begin in July 1 of 2023. I'll call on Vice Mayor Taylor.
All right. If I can get to my sheet here. Assuming they're in the packet. So there's, this is on the mayor's salary?
Yes, sir.
So there was two committees, as per the charter. Thank you very much. Two committees that are to be formed every four years to look at both the mayor and the council salary. This particular committee for the mayor's compensation looked at some MTAS data. I've been through the, I think we went through this a couple months ago. We decided to defer until this day to look at this, but I'll give you a brief overview of the things that we considered. We considered an MTAS survey of mayors and their compensation across the state, and we specifically looked at mayors that serve in similar-type governments. We also looked at a historic timeline of the mayor's position and that compensation, as well as the total compensation package for the mayor, which included retirement, health, and dental, and vision, city-funded vehicles, lift gym membership opportunities, and other things. Currently, the base pay for this position is $130,000. That pay was established in 2014 via a similar committee recommendation. It's important to note that this recommendation does not go into effect today. Both of these recommendations will go into effect for the next elected mayor and council. We felt at that time, that, and Councilman Pretty, you can jump in here at any point, but we felt as we looked at the current base compensation and the increase in pay and increase in expenses that we're seeing across the country and here in this community, that we did need some increase in that. But we wanted to look at that and try to be as budget-conscious as possible. And so instead of setting that pay for year one and that pay continuing for year, through four years, we thought that it would be advantageous to the city's budget to scale that increase over time. What you see before you in the table is the, in FY2024, that compensation would be increased to $136,500. That's a 5% increase over the current pay, and then we'd see 2% increases to that pay for the next three subsequent years to top out at $144,855. That would stay at that pay rate until there was another committee recommendation that would be provided. So those increases will not continue in perpetuity. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Porter was not able to be here today, but Mr. Pretty served on this committee with me, as well as Councilman Don.
Any questions from council? Any comments?
I guess I have a question, Councilman Taylor. Was it the same committee for the council?
No.
No, there were two separate committees.
Two separate committees. Did you chair both of those committees?
I did. Yes, sir.
I think one thing to note as well on this is the intent is this, for this to come up every four years. And so I think in years past, there's been maybe some inconsistencies where the committee met, sometimes it didn't, sometimes it didn't change. But yeah, in the process, I think one of the difficulties or challenges we had was, hey, our population size may be smaller, but, you know, being the hub city and the amount of people that come in from different communities, and trying to take in consideration all that from different angles was a challenge, but I think the committee did a good job of working through it, and I'm confident this is a good scenario.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, just for clarification. Councilman Taylor, you said currently it's 130, going to 140, and then with a revote in four years.
Currently, it's 130. FY2024 would be 136,500. And it would top out in 2027 at 144,855.
Thank you, sir.
Are you characterizing these increases as cost-of-living adjustments?
Yes.
All right, any additional questions, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is any further discussion from council? All right, is any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed. Eight to one, to one abstain.
All right, item seven is consideration of council compensation. It will also begin July 1, 2023.
As I stated earlier, this was a similar committee. This committee looked at similar information, an MTAS survey that looked at council and alderman compensation across the state with a specific focus on similar type governments. We also looked at the historic Jackson Council compensation timeline. That was provided by HR Department. Currently, the base pay for this position is $500. It's, the recommendation was to compensate future office holders at $350 per meeting, and that to be paid upon attendance of qualified meetings, and those are referenced below, capped at a maximum of $1,500 per month. These are the following meetings that the committee considered as qualifying, a regularly scheduled city council meeting, a special called city council meeting, our council work session or agenda review meetings, and our annual budget workshops and budget review meetings. There was additional recommendations provided. These are ancillary recommendations. One was to establish via ordinance a standing council work session prior to each regularly scheduled council meeting. That's to update, educate, and involve council members in deliberation. We're currently doing that kind of informally, but the committee looked at establishing that via ordinance. The second was to establish a budgeted amount of non-competitive funds for each council person to seek continuing education through webinars, conferences, workshops, leadership programs, et cetera. It's recommended that each council member be allotted the same amount to ensure accessibility during the fiscal year. These funds would not roll over from year to year, and if not, used for qualifying purposes during the budget year. Would resort back to our fund balance. I believe we have a committee member, we had a committee member here. He may have had to go. Yeah.
All right, any questions from council?
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
I have several questions, but my first one is, how does our salary compare relative to cities of our size?
That's an excellent question. We are on, we, when looking at this on the most recent survey we were provided by MTAS for our particular style of government, we are one of the lowest in the states, in the state paid per, presently per month for what is budgeted for councils. And even if you, you know, councils fluctuate in size as well, we looked at that as well. And we individually are paid at the lowest rate, or one of the lowest rates in the state.
What's the average?
The average is about $12,000 per year. Right now, we're at $6,000, so we're about 50% of that average.
And of those, I guess, equal cities that you investigated, how many of those have, I won't call it pay for play, but how many of those have you getting paid per individual meeting?
That information was not included in the survey that we looked at.
Okay, so this came out of the committee only?
That's right, yes.
Okay. As well as the recommendations?
That is correct.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of comments. While this would be, this would take effect in the future, I assume that myself and others do plan to be back. So, you know, in a sense, you could be voting to give yourself a pay raise. The attendance piece, I think about, and I shared this Thursday, but I think about Harvey Buchanan, a late council member. Harvey wasn't able to attend. He was undergoing treatment for cancer, and there was COVID everywhere. So the prudent thing for Harvey to do was to stay home. Under this attendance proposal, you would be penalizing him for something like that. And that's a bit of an unintended consequence. The other part of that is, there is more to just these meetings that we do. Councilmember Dodd, he will be hosting a meeting this evening in regard to gang violence in the city. So there's lots of work that we do outside of this, the phone calls. Sometimes somebody just wants you to listen. So I don't want that to be overlooked and penalized just for the sake of these things. But the thing that really hangs me up on this whole deal is, we have our pay study out there for our city employees. Okay? I believe we have that back, but we have yet to fully evaluate and take action on this. So for us to vote on this today, we would be putting ourselves in front of the full-time workers of the city, and unfortunately, I just can't agree with that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions from council regarding the proposal?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring it to everyone's attention that these would not go into effect today. These would go into effect for the next office holder, as Councilman McKelvey clearly stated. I think we have to look, that's the reason we punted this to this month, was in hopes that we could have some of that information back to make that decision. I think all the comments are well-heard. If there's an opportunity for us to consider, as I stated earlier, we need to have this, the mayor's compensation and the council compensation set at an appropriate level to attract well-qualified candidates to these positions. And to be, you know, so that they can be paid for their time. And so I'd hope that we would consider that in the discussion that we're having today.
Real quick, councilmembers, on the salary compensation study, we have preliminary information back. We're going through some reclassification with the consultant and making plans for, if we don't get it down to the granular level of each individual employee, we'll set aside some proposed budget funds to implement those as we get that information back.
So Mayor, after we tabled this once before, today's our drop dead deadline.
Today is, today is 12 months prior to next city election, so.
Just to make that point again, these are to establish appropriate compensation levels to fairly compensate for the responsibility of this position. I think Mr. McKelvey has an excellent point. This position extends well beyond these meetings. We all know that. We all spend much more time outside of the meetings, preparing for those meetings, take fielding calls from constituents, dealing with constituent issues, serving on numerous other committees. I know I've heard that as well. The committee felt that that per-meeting compensation would, that's something the city had historically done, but had changed from in the 90s. I think in the late 80s, the city was still on a per-meeting compensation for this position, but that had been changed in recent decades. So I'd like that to be considered as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. Out of the study and out of the group meetings, what is the monthly, what is your intent? What is the salary should be? Not based on the others, but what did your findings, what should that be?
Yeah, as I state, the typical pay is about $12,000 annually.
Okay, so that was 1,200?
That'd be $1,000 a month.
Okay. And then would you repeat the meetings that you would have to attend to achieve your $1,000?
That would be three meetings per month.
Okay, which would be?
Which would, you know, to get to that level. So on an average month, we would see about $700 per month compensation. On an average month, if we were to establish a work session and have today's council meeting, those two would be applicable meetings and would net $700 per month. If we had months like we had in the past, where we had multiple council meetings and multiple or budget hearings, then you'd be compensated for those as well.
Okay, so really, if you're looking at $700, I don't know that you're achieving what
That's right.
The committee would like to achieve.
You'd net, now, if we rewound for the past couple of months, we've been meeting multiple times a month, which would exceed, those, the multiple meetings would sometimes exceed that amount. That's why they put a cap in there.
Okay, so that was 1,350, the maximum?
1,050.
Okay, that's the maximum per month.
I have a question. Were you finished, Councilwoman?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, relative to the $2,500 for continuing education?
Yes.
I believe the council is aware of, surely, the Tennessee Municipal League Conference that is twice a year, and the National League of Cities Conference that is twice a year as well. Some have taken advantage of that over the years, especially myself and Councilman Dodd, and $2,500 just isn't enough for that. I understand that there possibly is more money in that account, but I would just ask for some flexibility on that. We invite all council people to take advantage of those, continuing legal, not legal, but continuing education and workshops and things. But it appears that some are not taking advantage of that, so we wouldn't want to penalize those who are trying to go to those conferences. And I don't think, don't know if Councilman Dodd would like to speak to that, but I know he's done a lot of training sessions relative to that. So I would like us to consider some flexibility in that.
Sure. Yeah, I think that it was the view of the committee that there be non-competitive funds. Currently, well, in years past, there had been kind of a pool of money that as the year went by, that pool would be depleted, and that could limit opportunities for other council members. And so they wanted to make sure that there was enough money for every council member to pursue those continuing education opportunities. But I do think you have a good point, that there could be some flex dollars budgeted as well, if there are overages for that amount.
Sure. And in the past, the mayor contributed that, Mr. Chairman, but.
I hear you.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
To council men and councilwomen, I'd like to make a recommendation that the city council salary be set at $12,000 a year, that there be no meeting requirements relative to that, and that, as I discussed, flexibility in the council expenditure committee for travel and continuing education.
Second.
Is that a motion, Councilman?
It's a motion.
Okay. Your second. Any discussion from council? Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to the committee, some of these recommendations, they're good recommendations. So in light of Councilmember Brooks' motion, we don't necessarily need to abandon these ideas, per se, but certainly they deserve additional discussion to perhaps be taken up at a later date.
Thank you, Councilman.
Some question to.
Go ahead, Councilman.
To make sure I understand the motion, Councilman Brooks, it's just a flat $12,000 a year and no attendance required. So basically, we'd be replacing, I mean, we wouldn't be adopting any of this in the recommendation from the committee. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I guess not.
Okay.
I would move to amend that to include the, I'd move to amend Councilman Brooks' motion to include that we establish via ordinance a council work session.
Second that.
I'd be willing to include that in my motion.
Okay.
So we're clear, $12,000 a year, we would look at establishing a council work session via ordinance.
I'm glad y'all making it easy on me.
And that's gonna take a couple, I apologize. And that flexibility in the traveling, continuing education budget.
We have the proposed, in the proposed budget right now, there's money allocated for all council members. Okay, so the motion is annual salary $12,000, $1,000 a month, flexibility in the travel, and then work to establish an ordinance for, to codify the work sessions. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Your second still standing, Councilman Dodd?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Okay, motion failed. And don't move them, let me, I need to record these. Three yeses and six noes. Please don't, don't change that. Okay, go ahead.
All right, Louis, pop quiz.
Pop quiz, time.
That motion is second failed. We do have to have a vote. Does that count as the vote on the compensation?
It counts as a vote.
Okay.
It is supposed to be two. That motion failed. As I interpret it, it would not be inappropriate to have another motion with a different parameter.
Okay, all right. Is there another motion with different parameters?
I would move that we increase the amount to $750 with no, with no attendance requirement and the establishment of a work session.
Work session, okay. The motion is increase to $750 a month?
Let me get my calculator out.
Yeah, I was about to say, which is that annually? Be what?
$9,000.
$9,000 annually. Okay. No attendance requirements, work session to be included in first reading ordinance next month. Is that right? Got everything there?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
And, excuse me, and the flexibility of.
Flexibility in travel.
That's right, in our continuing education funds.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Okay, hold up. That motion failed as well. We have Johnny and Ross and Paul. Yes, everyone else was a no.
All right, of the noes, is there a recommendation?
Oh, well. You said of the noes, is there?
I'm just trying to get everybody included.
Let me try it again.
Some of us are moving around.
Let me try it again. Some people are moving around. Let me try it again. $12,000 per year, we would include, I mean, how we want to, within that $12,000, have these three meetings?
Mayor, let me.
Come on, maybe you can help.
I think that, I think the appropriate procedure is someone from the prevailing side could move to reconsider. And the prevailing side would be the six red buttons.
Yes.
They'd have to move to reconsider to reopen it.
Okay. Is there anyone from the prevailing side on this last vote to reconsider?
Reconsider this particular vote.
The proposal for the council compensation. I think if we don't get someone from the prevailing side to reconsider, then it remains.
Here's what I'm thinking. There was a report from the committee with a recommendation. Then there was a motion, and that report from the committee was never really acted on. And so what I was thinking, I think that's right, the report from the committee could still have action, but to have an endless series of votes.
Amended, yes.
I don't think it was Robert Hill's talking, but.
I have those suggestions.
Should Ms. Maxwell read the names that are allowed to change?
Well, if you voted no, then if you voted no on this last one, and want to make a change, then make a change.
Let's just leave it like it is.
If there's no one from the prevailing side, the most.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to leave it as it is currently. That is $6,000 a year, $500 a month.
I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
You called it. Go for it.
Okay.
Call for a vote?
Yeah, call for a vote, yes.
Okay. No, wait, don't move. Now wait, don't move.
Don't anybody move.
We're just counting to nine.
We're mixing it up.
Well, but the thing is, it failed.
That was a quite different motion than she just voted on, so no.
All right, well, by, by the inaction of the council, it will stand as it is.
Yeah.
Inaction is action.
By inaction of the council, it will stand, the compensation for the city council will stay as is. All right. Item A, while you're up here, Louis, report and recommendation from City Attorney regarding anonymous ethics complaints.
We had two complaints that were discussed last month, we've had two, three more complaints, ethics complaints that were filed anonymously since then, I'm gonna read them in the chronological order in which they were filed. The first one is an allegation directed at Mr. Brooks and Mayor Conger, that Brooks is using his power for preferential treatment for not having to pay his JEA bill for six months, I'm sure they have a record, also Mayor Conger hired his father, Ed, in a department that he is not qualified in, what is going on here needs to be looked in. I'm gonna read all three, and then we can have a discussion, because my recommendation's gonna be the same on all three. Second was, Mr. Brooks is my councilman, he told me he wouldn't help me with my problem till I hired him as a lawyer, that's not right, I want my problem fixed, can someone help? And the third one is, and again, the context was after the discussion of Mr. Taylor, it says, at city council meeting on April 5th, five councilpersons voted to investigate Paul Taylor because of an anonymous complaint that he had a conflict because he or his family owns land in and around the city. Everyone on council knows Paul's business, and yet none of them suggested he should refrain, disclose, or otherwise take any action with regard to the Ed Issued votes, which were unanimous. So I have two separate complaints. One, every member who voted to investigate Paul should be investigated for failing to ask or demand of him that he not vote on the Ed Issued unanimous vote, that was a failure on their part according to their own position to protect the sanctity of the vote. Two, every member of council who owns any property in and around Jackson should be investigated, excuse me, for not disclosing their ownership interest prior to all votes. The statement was specifically made that all complaints have merit, so being, this is a meritorious complaint, I look forward to unanimous vote to investigate all members of council. Now, that made me smile, because I think it shows the problem with having an endless number of anonymous complaints that can go off in all different directions.
Louis, would you move the mic over closer to your mic? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did you, which parts did you mess?
The whole thing.
But go ahead. Would you like a copy, we can read it out loud?
That'd be fine, that'd be fine.
I only have one copy, but.
That's all right.
As I processed through those additional anonymous complaints, it, it occurred to me that there should be a better way. My suggestion is, we've distributed them to you, I've distributed them to the media, we've discussed them here, we have passed on first reading a different paradigm to process. I think we should stop here, but it's your decision, and use the new process on all five of those that have been previously filed. That's my recommendation, but that requires a motion from council, which would be to not table these, but to defer future action on these till we have the new process. If not, then the other options are the same as last time, has merit, it has no merit or need investigation.
Any questions from council?
Louis, that's the retroactive language that's in the new ordinance that would give us, or, or give that committee the right to review.
Right.
The older complaints.
The language specifically gives the right, I think the timing of action is really kind of inherently up to this body, but I think that, that shows the intent of the amendment.
Louis, I do have a question on.
All right.
The, the breakout of the three and two, two was already voted on, if, if the council were to vote on the three, go into the committee, would then the council have to open, reopen and, and make the motion, or could it be all five go, three and two, what would be, if the council decides to do that, what would be the best process?
I think a motion requires clarity of what's being requested, so that the votes are clear. If anyone says we want to break it down into individual complaints, we could do that by motion, or if the council wanted to take them as a group, we could do it, that's something they've got to decide.
Okay, all right.
And I think that, Chairman, that's the intent of my question earlier, trust me, it's not to hound anymore on these unnecessary, it was more just a clarity question of, if we handled the first two this way, this new ordinance is not in place, I think we're all trying to get to the same end result, get it to this ethics committee. My concern was, can we do that lumped together, and I guess you're saying it's our, our choice, or do they have to be handled individually, the, the person that it is being accused has a chance to, if they choose to defend themselves, and then we vote individually? That was just a clarity question, not, again, not trying to get in the weeds or dwell in this longer than need be. It's just hard, hard for me to understand, like, you, we'll get asked about it, right, after this meeting by anybody in the public of like, well, you handled it this way, first time around, now this way, that's where I'm just looking to you more so, what is appropriate?
Mr. Chairman?
I don't think we had a.
There's, there's a question asked to, to the city attorney, so let him answer.
I think either's appropriate, which way is the best way?
Okay.
I think the new process is better, clearer, more efficient, and focuses in on, you know, the, the dual question, what are the facts?
Right.
Is Mayor Congress father really, father-in-law really named Ed? You know, there's a factual issue, some of them are trivial, some of them may be important, then there's a legal issue, if those facts are true, is it an ethical violation? And I think the opinion that Steve Shields wrote at, at Mr. Taylor's request goes through that dynamic, what are the facts?
Sure.
And then what are the effect of those facts, and my conclusion is this, I like that, I like the way he structured that letter, Shields is an excellent lawyer, I like the thoroughness, I like the ability to weed them out, and, and so I think those are appropriate, but.
Yeah.
But y'all wrote, y'all wrote this, y'all passed it, it is a crea, your creation, not mine, and it is your ability to do, to modify if you want to, and then process them, either in the old rule or the new one, there's nothing requires you to stick with the old if there's a better way, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that the reason we voted is we did not have a better way, I believe our city council, our city attorney is recommending that there is a new way that he has case law and study that thinks that this would be a better way to handle it. And Ms. Councilman Pretty, to clarify, he is saying to group all five, retroactive the first two, and to handle all five the same way, to let the committee move forward, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to accept our city attorney's recommendation and lump all five together, and let the committee deal with this moving forward.
And then obviously, the committee, once it's appointed, will take each one up and do their, their separate investigation.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion and a second, are there any further discussion?
So this, this will be kind of a one-off for this committee, correct?
Yes.
Because these are anonymous, you know, the, the process that we're establishing moving forward has, has.
Has requirements on the complaints, yes.
Right, that, that, you know, the way that I see, well, every one of these, is that there's either confusion about what a, a councilperson, or what the, what the ethics policy is, what an, what an ethical violation is, but there's not, they're pretty generic, and there's not a lot of information and a lot of factual information included in the complaints.
Right.
And that, that leads, you know, I don't know how you would investigate some of these, I just don't know how you would do that.
I tell you what I did, I said, I'm not going to.
Well, I know you didn't want to.
That'll be up to the committee on that.
Right, you know, I, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know how, because some have no, no corroborating information, they're just a statement.
It's like an opinion, like an opinion.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion and second? All right, council, please vote.
Okay, motion pass, seven to, I'm sorry, five to one and two abstain.
Oh, I changed my vote, I'm sorry, did you get it?
Was yours a yes, Ernest?
It's a yes.
Okay, then, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
I got it.
Item nine, consideration, well, these are just sunshine, a budget amendment is less than 10,000.
Subpo.
It's just sunshine, we had to vote on those. Item 10, consideration of invoices over 10,000.
Subpo.
Have a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, nine zero.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just want to tell, today is Ms. Sandy Maxwell's last day, and, and, and I just wanted to recognize you, thank you for all the hard work that you've given, not only to us as council members, but to the various committees that you take notes for and provide minutes for, and all the other duties, you're kind of the air traffic controller for us, and I just wanna, yeah, I just want to give you a round of applause, thank you.
I've signed off.
All right. It's already standing, for the business, means adjournment.